14, I'd like to call the meeting to order and turn it over to Keith Porter for the welcome invocation and pledge.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone also to our board meeting tonight. And before we get started, this will be my last meeting as interim superintendent, so I wanted to thank some people. I want to thank the cabinet members, each of you who are in the audience today, for all of your assistance. Y'all have been wonderful. I want to thank the Board of Education for giving me this opportunity. It's been a wonderful experience for me, and I really do appreciate that. I also want to recognize two young men who are with us from Troop 245 and 457, I think. We appreciate you being with us tonight. So, we won't belabor the part, so if you'll stand with me, we'll say our prayer. Let us pray. God, we thank you for this day and for helping us to have such a wonderful start to the school year. We thank you for safety for all of our students. God, we pray that you would continue to be with each and every one of them, Lord, as we go through the school year. Father, we pray for our faculty, our staff, all those who provide support services. We just pray that you'd be with each and every one of them as they try to perform their task for the benefit of our students. God, we pray for your guidance for our school board and for those in leadership positions. We pray that you would be with them also, Lord. Lord, we pray for our country and our community. We pray that you go with us through this meeting. Amen. If you'll join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a force and agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Tom and a second by Ann, all in favor, unanimous. Next, we have a consent agenda. I assume everybody's looked over those things. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
A motion by Ann and a second by Nancy, all in favor, unanimous. Okay, we have public, no public participation tonight, so that was quick. Now, we're on to the presentation and discussion items. That's how I like to get things done. First, we have a student assessment update with Carl Mercer. Not just Carl, he's got, he's got his girls with him.
All those sound bites coming out from the State Board of Education, I'm dying to know what the scores are. Not that that's all that counts.
All right, so we're excited to be able to make this presentation to you tonight. And on behalf of Dr. Solomon and myself, we want to introduce to you a new look, as we call it. And we have our Director of Assessment, which is Beth Kiefer, and we have our Assessment Coordinator, which is Susan Norris, that we're excited that we got from Liberty County, and we have Carl Mercer, who is now our Director of Accountability, which you all are familiar with Carl. And if you look there on your screens, you can see the different responsibilities of each of them with our school system. Of course, we all bleed over a little bit into one another and what they do, but these are the primary responsibilities that each of them have. So, I'm going to turn this over to Carl now, and he's going to go through our assessment presentation for you.
Dr. Porter, members of the board, thank you very much. Hope everybody's having a great evening. We're going to start off with writing scores, and I know that you probably had a chance to look over. We can see that Forsyth County, as in grade five, we saw a 2% overall increase. We saw that in grade eight, there was an overall 1% decrease, and no change in grade 11. One thing to note with the writing is that the standards for CCGPS when it comes to writing are different than the standards that they assess. So, we expected a little bit of fluctuation. And grade five and eight and grade three will be, this will be the last year that we've had that, so we will not have those assessments this year. Here's a look at our exceeds. Forsyth County Schools is in the upper left-hand corner. For exceeds, we had a 2% decrease for grade five, 2% increase for grade eight, and then a 1% decrease for grade 11. Again, with the difference in standards, we expected some fluctuation. And we also put RISA in the state, so you can see kind of the overall and how we compared CRCT scores, which is, this is the last round of CRCT scores, spring 2014. Graphical representation of grades three through grade five in the five different subject areas. The light blue represents our system, and you can see that in every area, our system is above the state meets and exceeds rates. And to take a look at also the exceeds comparison, so even though with meets and exceeds, we're above just by a little bit, when you compare to actually the exceeds, we have many more in the exceeds areas, and sometimes almost double. You can see grades six through eight, same situation in every area, we're above the state mean. And then with the exceeds, you can see that we have several areas that we are ahead of the state as far as the percentage of exceeds. Grade six, science, almost three or four times what they have. So, we're doing a great job. We have great teachers, and they're doing a great job of using the data to guide their instruction. Also comparing the, not only the meets and exceeds, but also the scale scores, you can see that our average scale score is above the state's average scale score for grades three through five, reading, again, all five subject areas, and then also for grades six through eight. Some of the reflection, looking over some of the data, we see that in reading, grades four through eight, we had scores at 99% meets and exceeds, increased exceed scores 4% to 10% from last year, so a pretty big increase, pretty significant. English Language Arts, grade eight, had a 5% increase in exceeds from last year. Math for grades three, four, six, and eight, a 2% to 4% increase in exceeds from last year. Science, grades three through six and eight, 2% to 4% increase in exceeds from last year. And then also grades three, five, six, and eight had an increase in their meets and exceeds from last year. Social Studies, all grades two to 12% increase in exceeds, with grade four having an increase of 12%. And I think, you know, part of that is the focus of CCRPI now, including social studies and science in the overall accountability piece, we've seen that focus in those areas in the schools, instead of AYP just being math, English, and reading. And then the last bullet, which I'm very proud of, when compared to school systems that administer tests to over 1,000 students, so we kind of look at those comparable districts, Forsyth County topped the state in all CRCT areas when comparing either meets and exceeds or scale score. And there's a couple of areas where it shifts, but if you look at either one of those, we are top in the state. CRCTM scores, and this is the last year for the CRCTM, will not be continuing. We have a slide on kind of what assessment is going to look like this year. We can see that comparing FCS to the state in several of the areas, if not all of the areas, with the exception of grade eight reading, we have more students at that basic proficiency. And if students meet that basic proficiency for two years or more, then they will move out of the CRCTM and actually take the CRCT in that area. Here's the results for ELA. You can see that we've got a couple of areas where we're right around where the state is as well. We've got those three different areas below, emerging and basic. Emerging is what we would consider proficient when we look at the CRCTM, and basic is that they're exceeding that proficiency. That's why if they meet it for two more years, we move them on to the regular assessment. And here is our results in math as well. Grade three math, 21% versus the 10%. Over the summer, we do have retests. Actually, it happens for the CRCTM and the CRCT. It happens at the end of the school year for elementary and then the week after for the middle school. And you can see that with grade three, we had 48% of the students that came in and retook the test, passed the second time with the retest. Grade five in reading, we had 61%, math 61%, and then grade eight, we had 50%, and then 56% for math. And this is just a testimony to the work that the schools are doing, that one or two weeks of remediation that they have before we do give the retest.
Was it, and it still worked last year, this, I guess you'd say this current year, tests were just a little bit later than they had been in the past?
Yes, they were a little bit later, so even more crunch for time.
And it still worked out pretty well?
Still worked out well, very much so. Moving on to EOCT scores for spring of 2014. Again, looking at the graphical representation, you can see that we are above the state meets and exceeds. Just wanted to notate that coordinate algebra, significant increase from last year. And analytic geometry, we're in a better place this year than we were with the first year, since it is the first year than we were with the first year of coordinate algebra. Teachers are doing a great job, and the schools are doing a great job.
So are these graphs a combination of fall-spring or an average?
Yes. Well, with the analytic geometry, most of, a lot of our upper-level students, our students in accelerated analytic geometry and our students in a, we have a combo class, they actually take the analytic geometry in December. They take that EOCT. So, I've included those in these results because they are our first-time test takers. That's really the only information that includes December, is the analytic geometry. So if you look at any of the scores that the state published, these are going to be different for analytic geometry because we have gone back to include those as well. Again, coordinate algebra and analytic geometry are not where we want it to be, but when you look comparison to the rest of the state, we are far above where they're at. And this is a comparison of the scale scores. Again, you know, pretty significant differences in that mean scale score between the system and the state. And comparing all of our EOCTs to last year's EOCTs, we increased in every single area, meets, exceeds, and exceeds. Pretty significant increases in coordinate algebra. We had some system goals for coordinate algebra, and we met those goals both for meets and for exceeds. And even though American literature for meets and exceeds shows a 0% change, there was actually a slight increase, but you'll notice that there's a 10% increase in exceeds. So, we're maintaining meets and exceeds, but we're moving those kids from meets to exceeds, from good to great. So some reflections on EOCT. All EOCTs increased in both exceeds and meets and exceeds when compared to 2013. Coordinate algebra increased by 11% exceeds and 6% meets and exceeds compared to 2013. American literature increased by 10%, which is pretty significant as well. When compared to school systems that administered to over 1,000 students, Forsyth County topped the state in ninth-grade lit, analytic geometry, coordinate algebra, biology, economics, and U.S. history. Forsyth County was number two in the state when you look at American Lit and physical science. And it wasn't by much, it was very close. And then eight out of nine of the middle schools had 100% meets and exceeds on the coordinate algebra EOCT, and six out of nine had 80% or more exceeds, which is, yeah, amazing, very amazing. And so that's kind of a review of our assessment scores for last year. I was going to let Ms. Norris talk about what the state assessments are going to look like next year.
Good evening. We have a lot of changes happening this year in the state assessment program. We'll look at what's out. First, CRCTM will no longer be administered. CRCT will no longer be administered. Third grade, fifth grade, eighth grade, writing will no longer be administered. The writing will now be embedded within the Georgia Milestones Assessment in English Language Arts. And we will continue with EOCT for the mid-month administrations and the retest administrations August, September, October, and November, and then EOCT will be finished in November. And in December, we will have our first administration of the Georgia Milestones Assessment System. The assessment system is a three-through-12 system, and it's separated into two subsystems. There's end-of-grade, which is third grade through eighth grade, and then end-of-course, which is high school. And the same courses that were tied to EOCT will also be tied to the end-of-course administration. And as I said earlier, the writing will be embedded in the end-of-grade in the language arts component, and it will also be embedded in the ninth grade. There will be writing in ninth-grade literature and the EOCT, ninth-grade literature and the other literature. What's the title? Thank you, American literature. We will still have the Georgia High School Writing Test for this year. We are still continuing the Georgia High School Graduation Test, the retest only, and that number does diminish each time that we do have that assessment. We will continue with GAA, and we will continue with GCIS, and we will also continue with the access for this year for the EL students. Do you have any questions about the assessments? Thank you.
And so this last slide just gives some information and some locations where you can find more information, a lot of the information I put together. You can get some sites from the Georgia Department of Education and also some links on the FCS website. I do have the dashboard listed. I know that's under construction right now, but once we get that up and running, that will have a lot of information, and it'll have information based on school and the different assessments that we have. Do you have any questions for me?
I do, Carl. Last year, when we had the coordinated algebra and all the test scores were so bad in the state, and I was at the state board meeting, they asked me why Forsyth County did so well. My question to you is, in all of your analysis, what would you say was the difference? The great leaps that we made this year, not only in coordinate algebra, but some of the other classes, do you think it's the Ins line platform, or do you think it's staff development, or what are some of the things that you think may have made the difference?
I think there's a lot of things that we're doing in the county as far as staff development. We had a data team that was focused, that I led, that was focused on coordinate algebra. We also had Erin Zitka led a group on analytic geometry, really focusing on what the standards and what the instructional strategies look like. And then you just, being involved in the Inspire Program last year, almost every high school had a goal that was, you know, had something to do with coordinate algebra, analytic geometry, and the EOCTs. So I really think it's that, it was that heightened awareness, you know, and really attacking as a team, and looking at the data, looking at the instructional strategies, looking at the standards, and determining, you know, what do we need to do to move forward? We looked at a lot of data based on state, but we also looked at the data within our county. And so, you know, again, it's just that heightened awareness and that, you know, that team approach to attacking those standards and, you know, determining what we need to do to do better.
You're just to be commended because it's phenomenal to see the growth. It's just great.
We also had a number of sessions with Kathy Matthews on performance-based instruction, and that really focuses on, you know, when you take the assessments out of it, when you focus on instruction and relating that instruction and the standards to real-world application and working with those kids, that had a lot to do, again, that's part of the professional development that we did as well.
Is that maybe made it more interesting to the kids, that it was a little more real?
Yes. It's focusing on open-ended, it's focusing on questioning, open-ended questions. It's not just, you know, multiple choice, and really looking at the instruction and focusing that instruction on the standards and making sure that you have a good inquiry-based instructional plan.
Okay, great.
So, all the numbers are great, of course, but I'm sure y'all going home at 3:00 every afternoon, right? Putting your feet up. But I know better than that.
Is that in the afternoon?
Better than the aftertable. So I know they'd like to, but I know we always work to raise that bar up again. How's the strategy? What are those areas we're going to try to focus on? Does that come from the central office, or do we let those teams get together and review the data and come up with the next strategy?
Well, we're always going to look at the data from a district approach. This year that we've got, we've got a day coming up on August 27th, which is going to be a district data team day, where the schools have, we've given them an agenda, and they're going to focus either on their classroom, teacher classroom, data teams, or they're going to focus on school-wide data teams to look at towards school improvement and to look at their areas of needs and to see what they need to do to improve. I've been meeting with some of the school administrators and looking at CCRPI and looking at, you know, what does, what does that tell you about the work that you need to complete in your school, and just kind of working through it and looking at the data and really disaggregating that down to the student level, or getting it to the point where they can take it now, take some of the assessment data that we provided them, and then dig down to that student level.
And this all affects a CCRPI score, is that not correct?
That's correct.
For all the schools, so this should improve, and we should look really good.
Yes, ma'am.
That's great, because everybody works so hard. That's good.
Great schools, great teachers.
You're right.
It's been my pleasure to speak with you this evening. Have a great afternoon.
That was great. Thank you.
Okay, we have the introduction and presentation of the architectural finalists for the high school additions and modifications with Mr. Tim Anderson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me back. I hope I didn't wear out my woken last week. Tonight, I'm going to bring you up to date with where we are for our high school additions and modification programs. As you know, once we met with the board back in January and established what projects would go into the bond for future funding, we began to help pull those projects together. We decided one of the best things to do from our local facility plan to the bond program was to work on how those would be presented for an architectural contract and conceptual design, truly to kind of hope everything fit like we had planned. So, with a list I had pulled together from Mr. Walter, child of myself, as we evaluated the projects, programs that were coming up, we came up with a team of about eight architects that we invited, all of them accepted, and all of them provided a presentation for each of the north, south, and central high school projects. They all gave us display boards. We pulled together committees made up of the school administration team, athletic directors, certain department chairs, to sit in the room with all the displays from each and every architect for their school, went through them one by one, picked out the favorites. If ones didn't quite make the cut, we flipped the boards over, moved through the line, and we came down to basically two finalists for each of the high schools. And at that time, we asked each of them to come in and do their sales pitch, to come in there and tell them what their firm was like and why they, from what they understood the program plan, which was a very plain Jane copy script of, we need this room, this room, this room, this room. It's up to you how they fit, where they go, how they connect. We tried to leave it as plain as we could for them to use fresh pair of eyes to look at the program. So, tonight, I'd like to introduce the three finalists that were selected by the committee. And we will start with, how about North Forsyth High School, since y'all sitting in a quick position? Yeah, be a move out here. The firm of Foreman Sealy Fountain Architecture, Jerry Fountains is one of the principals, and Kathy is going to make the presentation introductions.
Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for having me. I'm Kathy Palanche with Foreman Sealy Fountain Architecture, with Jerry Fountain, one of my principals. We just wanted to say how honored we are to be able to work on the addition and renovation. It's been a lot of fun going through. One of the first things that we did is we, do I just do the arrows? Perfect. One of the first things we did with North Forsyth was go down and take a look at the school, wander around, watch the kids as they move throughout, kind of just get a feel for the school. We took that and what we've learned for, from our recent work with Wheeler High School, the additions we've done with that, and the program, and we think we've created a very exciting, very dynamic plan for the school. We really think this will be something that the school will really be able to enjoy and help solve a lot of issues with the school. One of the first things that we noticed was when we drove up, we were unsure where to go for the main entry. You have the fine arts building in the beginning, the area for parking, so we kind of wandered around a little bit, and that was one of the first things that we decided we wanted to do, is that right as you come down that drive, kind of pull out the administration area and be that, have that be your first focus right as you come in. So one of the other things that we looked at is looking at schools of the 21st century, the new way the kids learn, the new way kids do things, is we wanted to take the cafeteria kitchen, which is now, the cafeteria has become like a cafeteria commons area. It's much more flexible, it's much more open. Not only is it a commons area for the kids to use for lunch, but it's also an area for the school to use during orientations, banquets, for the community to come in and be able to have this area that is part of the school, but yet something that they can also use. One of the other things that we looked at is when we were standing in the courtyard area where the classrooms and the cafeteria are right now, there was a class change and just a sea of kids that crossed through the class. We thought, well, with the buses and the cars, that's not a good thing, so one of the things we looked at was taking the 22 instructional units and trying to make a more cohesive school, to be able to kind of eliminate that sea of kids crossing through the automobiles, and then also create a more secure school. So you'll see two main boulevards. The students or the teachers and the administration really just kind of have two main points to keep an eye on the kids. There's two points of access on each end or entrance, and that just really helps with movement. When the kids are changing classes, things are different going on. It just helps maintain better security throughout the school. One of the other programming issues was to add a public health and a sports health. So we've, that's the areas in the purple. We decided to go ahead and put that over to the side where the career tech area is now. And in doing that, we realized the area in yellow right next to it that was the existing cafeteria kitchen area actually opened itself up to be a very good area for the band. It had a great loading dock. It's got lots of areas that we can create different orchestra rooms or different practice rooms. So we decided to go ahead and put the band area there and take the old band area and make that the choral. It would also work out very well to be a choral area. In the back, we decided to place the competition gym, it'll be a 3,000-seat competition gym, right next to the existing gym. That way, we're able to share some of the facilities there, but also one of the things that allows us to do is below it, put the ROTC. And so the whole ROTC program can be right in that area by the gym and with the existing gym. We looked at, in placing the students or the cafeteria and the new student classroom, we were able to move the bus to the side of the facility so that it now separates the area of the visitor parking with the bus. So you no longer have that combination of the two trying to be in the same location at one time. So, but we just really wanted to, we're really looking forward to working with Dr. Abear and with the staff and the students and coming up with a, you know, refining this design and really coming up with something that they will enjoy, and just wanted to say how honored we were to be able to work with North Forsyth.
Thank you. I spoke with, I've spoken with Dr. Abear a couple of times, and she's, she has been very appreciative of how you have worked with them and kept them in the loop and listened to their ideas.
What makes a school really work?
She, they appreciate it.
Is the library being moved to the media center?
No.
It's going to stay where it is.
Right now, the intent is to keep it where it is. It is right across from the new cafeteria dining hall collaborative space.
Okay.
So the idea was having those two spaces in conjunction work very well.
Okay. Was that a walkway to the new gymnasium on the last slide?
Let me see if I can go back that way. Yes.
Right there? Okay.
That comes off that courtyard area between the cafeteria and the original high school wing, and we're going to try to look at defining that crossing path and area to the new competition gym, and of course, they alignment with the new competition gym to basically enter into the side of the old gym, so those spaces can be shared. We don't have coaching staff having to move too far between buildings, depending on what.
Tim, is there going to be any additional parking added to north?
We do. We're looking at developing the, in fact, in this slide, you see at the very top of the screen, a little zigzag line that goes down to the track and field area parking lot, so that's a little bit more accessible than coming up the driveway.
Right.
We're also going to work on developing the gravel lot that runs next to the bus driveway as you go to the transportation office, and
Think a preview slide?
I was going to say.
I forgot we have two presentations. So as you can see at the corner, there's going to be a new visitor parking area
Right in the front?
Right by the front.
I wondered, yeah, I thought that was new.
And part of the other program
What did you say that was in the back? Zigzag one?
Right there, that would be the parking area that's by the administration.
No, one more back, in the very back there.
Behind the gym?
Yeah.
That is going to be the access to the parking area that's right next to the track and field.
That way, instead of walking up the driveway that leads down to the track and field, they'll have a direct stairway to come back up to the back of the gym and that area.
Oh, I got a suggestion. The only thing I'm going to say is, if that The only thing I'm going to say is if that went up to the concession stand in the bathroom, then you would have access to that bathroom, which they don't have access to a bathroom at all at Track and Field right now. So think about that.
Access on the other side of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Just on the other side of the building.
Okay.
And again, as we make sure, the statement is, these were all very conceptual plans.
Right.
Yes.
There's less room. We have a, if the contracts are accepted tonight, we actually have our kickoff meetings with the architects lined up to begin next week.
That's very exciting.
So the offices are right there?
Yeah.
In the front.
In the front, that's another idea.
If you notice, that Dr. Abear's office is now gone and under the words that says cafeteria commons on this slide, that the actual front of the building has now been basically removed. We will be relocating the marketing deck classroom that's in the front to open up that boulevard as we talked about before, that's across the front building. So we'll build a new marketing lab. We take out the old administration suite, move it up to the front.
Good. Looks great.
It does look great.
That's nice.
Yeah, that'll be nice.
That'd be very nice.
Okay. That was North Forsyth High School. And looking at my audience, I'm going to pick on South Forsyth High School since they're the next one closest to our space. This is Dee Smith, one of the principals with Manley Spangler Smith Architects. And Jan Sales, the architect who's been leading up the project for South. Jump that over.
I'll just, V Smith, as Tim mentioned, with Manley Spangler Smith Architects. I'll be the principal in charge for the additions, modifications there at South Forsyth High School. And Jan Sales will be the project architect. We've got a good staff ready to join us back at office for this exciting project. So I'm going to let Jan kind of walk you through South Forsyth designs.
Thank you. The first slide is a Google Earth image of the existing site. And we also visited the site and saw firsthand the daily challenge for students and, and staff to access all the buildings on the campus. We were there during several class changes when a flood of students went across the parking lot, and we could see firsthand their concern for safety and security. So on this plan, the blue is the new addition and the green is what is going to be the modification areas. So the first move was to consolidate both admin areas from west hall and east hall and create a new front door. In those areas, in the west hall and east hall, they became support areas. So that would be, you know, work rooms or assistant principal areas. Then we combined the kitchen and the cafeterias for both buildings, also in the new addition area, creating the food court service area concept similar to your two newest high schools. In the west hall, the kitchen cafeteria space now is a hospitality suite. Hospitality is a new program that combines culinary arts and marketing. In the east hall, that area has become classrooms and also a toilet battery. And then another move that we thought was important was to take the chorus and the band programs and locate them near the performing arts center. This not only helped them with the accessibility of getting equipment between venues, but also by building these as new spaces, we could concentrate on the acoustics of the space. Then the additional rooms down the hallway are just additional classrooms as well as two science labs that have gone into where the band room used to be.
Was that the green ones?
Yes. Towards the bottom of the, of your screen, you'll see that's where we've added the competition gymnasium there next to the east hall. And in between, that gave us an exciting opportunity to create a pedestrian plaza that's an open courtyard, but it's surrounded by a colonnade. So it's completely covered surrounding that area as well as covered between the cafeteria connecting down to the east hall and the gymnasium. What we were proposing is having a decorative fence on that left-hand side as well as on the bottom so that during class days, that area is safe and secure. Everything is closed off. They can have, you know, gatherings in that area. That could be, senior, senior dining could go out there. But then on a game day, what we've done is you can see there's, there's trees kind of leading out towards the main parking lot. And on the end, we thought we would have a decorative arch that would lead the visitors to this pedestrian plaza, open up the gates. This would be a great area for pep rallies, for gatherings before basketball games or football games. And then it's, it's open, of course, with the covered walkway, but open towards the, the football field. Then on this next slide, this is an overall of what the new site plan would look like. The traffic pattern is very similar to what they have now as far as entering and exiting the site. But when they enter, there is additional parking towards your, the bottom left side of your screen. And then there is a drop-off area in what would be the new front door area. And then continuing down the first main road, there's a new service access drive that would give them access to the kitchen, to the band, and to the performing arts center. Continuing around, the bus parking is, is located in the same area, and they would unload and walk through the building into the cafeteria. And then if you look further up on the screen, we've relocated a field access drive so that they will still have access to the football field.
Can I ask a question? You mentioned new parking over towards the front. I'm trying to visualize like where the trailers are now. Where, where is the new parking if you're...
On, on the screen, if you look at the bottom left, there's two smaller parking lots.
Okay, where the trees, near the trees.
With, with green islands separating the parking.
Another question, an item that came up last week was mentioned in talking about entrance area. Is there any way to change the flow so that during the morning drop, a carpool line, that all the cars come in now and they take that curve and they go all the way around? Is there any way to get the students into the parking area directly and let the parents that are carpooling go right and do their thing?
Yeah, we can...
So just to, I mean, if you're, there's no sense in, there will be intermixing if they don't have to.
That, that is a good point. And we'll, we'll talk about that when we get together next week. And then the last slide that I wanted to show is just a 3D conceptual, of course, as we, as this is developed further.
That's nice.
We'll add textures and colors and there might be minor modifications. But on the left-hand side, you can see the new front entrance area, and that's a raised area with clear story windows to let a lot of light into, into that front. And then over there towards the right, you'll see the competition gymnasium and the pedestrian plaza with the, the covered walk.
Wow, that's going to look...
It's easy to tell. It was hard to visualize the courtyard until you, until you see it now. That's, that's really nice.
And again, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to, to work with Forsyth County Schools. It's exciting, and we look forward to getting started.
Absolutely. So long school again.
Yeah, exactly. We're filling all, all the empty spaces.
Hopeful, the center will define the areas.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
That is exciting, isn't it?
It is exciting. It really is.
Last but not least, I give the team from Clark Patterson Lee. Clark Patterson Lee was the finalist selected for the Forsyth Central High School project. I will go ahead and speak out that part of the team that's behind me here has some experience with the high schools, that two of the members were on the team as we developed West Forsyth High School before they moved to a new architectural firm later in the, in their career, but...
Alex, I'll jump on. Scott Gordon with Clark Patterson.
All right, Tim and I have a little run in bed because I've got 17 slides and he said I couldn't do it in five minutes. Getting my phone out.
Yes, we do.
Two more slides.
That's without us.
I advise you this far along.
All right, I'll push start. There we go. I'm Scott Gordon. I'm with Clark Patterson Lee. I am our office lead that will be leading this project. And with me tonight, I've got Kevin McCumber, who is a senior vice president and leads our entire southern operations out of our Swanee office. And my partner in crime, Mr. Tim Paulver, who is our design manager, project manager, interior designer, jack of all trades that works with me in our Woodstock office. So we have you surrounded here as we come to at you from both sides of our offices, and the project is right in the middle. So we're very excited to be, to be chosen to, to represent Forsyth Schools on this one. This slide is basically the overview of what Tim and company had provided for us to look at, providing for the program. And as you can see, it's mostly core and learning unit additions and retasks. So the key core components that you see there are a new cafeteria kitchen, a new media center, and of course, the new field house. All of the other components are essentially either additions or retasks of learning units. So for instance, the intensive intervention special education center is in there, which we're extremely excited about. Automotive labs, some work to our STEM academies, coral classrooms, drama classrooms. So we're, so really, this one's about core improvements and learning unit improvements. And, you know, rather than get into the weeds about all the details that are there, we want to take just a couple of minutes and show you some of the highlights of what we're going to do to transform this campus. You can walk up to a quarter mile if you walk from one side to the other. It is about a quarter mile before you're done. It's 380 feet to get between those two buildings across that lawn. So how do you connect those structures? What we're going to do is create an interior production, interior pedestrian connection that's going to take east campus and unify it with west campus so that we'll be able to enclose the students, not just from rain and the elements, but also to keep them, be able to mingle all over the campus. Security's never been more important in our schools than it is right now. So closing these corridors and keeping things tight and contained and controlled with doors and access is so, so important. Because of the way this project is decided, we've got south light just blowing toward the, the bottom there off the, the drive at the bottom. And we've got great north light from the stadium on the other side. So as we develop this, solar orientation is going to allow us to create some really nice spaces for the students as we, as we develop it. The practice field, which you're currently utilizing, we think that we need to maintain that and enhance it. It's on the north side of the building, so the new addition will allow the students to be able to block from that southern sun and they'll be able to utilize that field for casual use and, and student use as well as practice field use. So we wanted to maintain that for certain. Over here to the left is where we're going to maintain the service drive. That's where deliveries are currently made. Our kitchen access is going to be on that side. We're going to go ahead and pull some, some access all the way through that would allow us to, to maintain service and keep it separated from the pedestrian and, and student movement areas as well. Over on the right, adjacent to the existing music programs, we put the coral program in right there, tucked in so that it's part of that whole new connector piece as it comes across. And then the, the actual connector itself that fronts onto the practice field, we're extremely excited about that. It's a little bit wider hall. It'll give students opportunities to gather and mingle and work. But right here at the knuckle is where we're going to put a BYOT 21st Century Lounge where there'll be good, strong Wi-Fi access, and there might be some seating. We might have the school store located there. So that right there along that main street that connects these two pieces of the campus, we want to be able to have this, this feature that opens up to the outside. And again, remember, southern sun's blocked in my back, so they can go out there and it won't be quite as hot in that courtyard. So it just really, really works out well. We're excited about what that little feature will be. And just by widening the corridors a little bit and, and looking at how we're going to architecturally treat that connector piece, I think we can squeeze in a little more bang for our buck for that piece of the program. The corridor that's between the two, the media center, which is on the right, and the, under the A there, which is the new food court style cafeteria, we'll have an extra wide corridor there as well that will allow the students to be able to move back and forth to the practice field and to a future admin suite, which we see that could actually now front the, the road out there so that the school can actually have a front door, a front face, and have a very pleasant sort of a front door. So that central, we'll actually have central now. So we'll have east campus, west campus, and central campus at central. So it seemed to make sense to us. We are happy to report that some of our initial cost estimates, we believe that, you know, it is not out of the question to think that we might be able to entertain adding the administration to this. So we are not promising it, but we're going to work really hard to see if we can deliver it. So you're probably wondering, you know, if, if the plan is set up the way it is here, you know, what, what might it look like in the future? Well, I'll do that one more time. Look over here on the right. You know, as we retask the entire campus there, everything that we've done in terms of the connection and the BYOT lounge and all the pedestrian corridors would all begin to tie into a future addition when we retask the other spaces over to the right. So nothing we do today will undo as we move forward so that it's additive. So many times, we tear things out to, to, to have progress, and we've thought about that as well. And just for the record, no, that's not in the scope. What is it going to look like? Here are some sketches and some little concept 3D perspectives that we threw together real quick. This is sort of what we envisioned. Will it be all brick? Will it be brown roofs? Will it have arches? We don't know, but this is what it could look like. This is the interior courtyard. The BYOT lounge is on the left. This is the opposite side, which is from the, the main road. This is the stairs that would come up, because as you know, that side is, is a little higher. So we're going to have a little terrace that comes in as well. And then of course, the, the new main entry there that would be the student drop off and a potential canopy piece that would drop in. And you're right.
Six minutes, 11 seconds.
Good job.
That was great. That really is. It's exciting.
Be happy to answer any questions you might have. We are just thrilled about it. And as Tim had said, we, Tim Paulver and I had the pleasure of working on the prototype for, for West Lambert. And we're thrilled to be back with an opportunity to work with this system again.
Well, I'm, I'm really excited about that, to see this and to see how it would fit in when we get the next section down of the school. But to come off Elm Street was just brilliant. I don't know why we haven't thought about that. That is just great.
Yeah, I can't expect that at all.
School needs a front door.
Oh, it does.
Need something new.
On the way here, you know, the elementary school, it has its own face. I can't wait to get that full face.
Right. It's so exciting.
Great. So exciting.
All right, thank you. In our lifetime, it's going to happen.
I know.
I know, I want it.
I know, I know.
And now, just to get that big yes to the architectural. I'm with you.
We're not actually...
You're right. Okay, that would be you.
Okay. I know we had a discussion last week about possibilities for training. So I called Jerry McGibney, who's the deputy superintendent for the DOE, talked to him a little bit about the possibility of us providing our own professional learning and getting credit for that because we really feel like the training that we provide here in Forsyth County has been of such quality that it would, would, would certainly be a good option for us. But they said the problem with that would be that we would be actually doing our own training and then getting credit for it and granting that credit locally. So it was sort of a conflict of interest because we would provide the training and then credit ourselves with that, that training. But there is an option there, and that's to go through our RESSAs and talk to them, Metro ReSA, look at the possibility of them coming in with some of the, the options that they have approved and work with them to make them fit the things that we feel like are quality professional learning. A lot of places are doing that right now. That will not help us for this school year unless we looked at another ReSA that would come in as just a facilitator for that one activity or two activities that we actually hold. But it's something that we can look at for the future definitely and talk to Leann at, at Metro ReSA, see if she would be willing to help us work on that.
Yeah, I think that was... I really, when I saw the list of things that were being offered from other options that we've always used, it was very impressive. But to be able to use ReSA like that, which I never even thought about, will help us do what we're trying to accomplish. That's great. It's a great idea.
So are we going to try to get the training into October?
Before October, I think it's only online are our only options. I think the problem is most of them were two credit courses, so you'd have to take, three people would have to take two courses each instead of just one. There weren't any three credit courses out there when I was looking. And again, some of them are so repetitive of what we've already had. You get a lot of that when you go to our conferences, GSBA.
Are most of those one, GSBA, two hours, all those?
Yes, two credits.
That's so you have to take three.
I'm sorry.
And did we have anyone who exceeded the number of hours? I know we didn't, that would lend itself to maybe having, it says a majority of the board members have to have the 15 hours.
Nine. Isn't it nine?
Nine is the law.
Yeah, we have to do the nine, 12, and then 15 is the next level up.
So I presented to you a handout that has all the providers and the possibilities there. It doesn't give dates, times, those kind of things, but they are possible to talk to and see if we could arrange something. It will be hard to do that by October, though.
It would be.
I think with all that we've got going on with the transition with superintendent, I don't really think we need to...
I think we should just, yeah, go for next year. I don't, you know.
Yeah, it's not like...
I don't see a, I don't see a problem. I don't think...
That's what I didn't know. It probably would be hard to find a date and get somebody... That's what I didn't know. It probably would be hard to find a date and get somebody here.
Alrighty. So we're all agreed with that. Okay. Next, we have the finance report with Rick Gunn.
This is the first time Dan hasn't ever been here. Oh, we let Mr. Jones take a vacation.
Yes, we did. We took a much deserved vacation.
Goodness. Although he has been working.
He's down in Florida somewhere as we speak. Well, tonight I'll be presenting the financial statements to you in his absence. First up, we have the statement of cash receipts for the month of July. We began the month with $41,714,000. Dispersions were 15 million, excuse me, receipts 15,988,000. Dispersed 30,43,000 with an ending balance of 27,660,000. I wanted to call your attention to transfers to debt service, 5.6 million. We had to move some money from general fund over to debt service to cover the July payments. It's just a cash timing issue. Once we get the tax money coming in in October, November, we'll move it back. So basically, we'd have another 5.6 million as our cash balance at the end of July if it had not been for that. Next would be the July budget. Not a lot of activity in revenues because this is our first month, 4.6%. Overall, we're at 11.59% spent. Below would be a detail for each of those areas. I won't go through those unless you want me to scan through them. Next is checks. During the month, we issue, I think it was 310 checks, value of 13,794,000. We have the May school reports, the June school report and the July school report since all the bookkeepers are back now. All schools are reported for all three months. SPOS 4, for the month of July, we collected 2,797,000 as compared to the previous month, which is a $50,000 drop compared to the previous year of 2.5 million. It's a 10.73% increase over last year. And it earned a whopping $2,377 in interest on the $24 million balance that we have in SPOS 4 as of right now. The graph, you can see it's slowly ticking up here a little bit. Just keep going that way.
Right, exactly.
The earnings on the '07 bond investment was $879 with an ending balance of 7.3 million. The '05 bond investment earned a whole $281, balance of 2.3 million. This is the capital project analysis, which basically shows that all of our money is basically obligated in Fund 301, which is for the Brandywine project. So there's $0 free over on the right-hand side. Let's see, debt services cash analysis, beginning balance of 24,576,000. We did have SPOS revenue for the month to 2.7 million. We had 7.3 million of expenditures, which would have been for bond payments. The transfers in, 5.6 million of that 5.7 million number is from the general fund for the bond payments that were due in July. General, excuse me, debt service cash has 1.4 million in it. SPOS has 24,490,000 for a total of 25,889,000. Any questions on the current financial statements?
That's fine. Is the next bond payment due in February?
There's different ones at different months. So I have to go back and look at the schedule. But they're due twice a year. We have them in February and we have some in August and some in July. So they're all a little bit different.
Okay.
So they're hitting at different times.
So after we get the money, we'll be fine?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's just a cash flow issue is what it is. This is a quick summary of fiscal year 14 and where we're ending up. It's not the final audit of the numbers yet. We still have a few more closing entries to make. But if you were to look at the revenues, you can see we collected 4.9 million more than we had budgeted for. That's primarily from tax revenues, 3.7 million. The 1.2 million is for QBE over what we had budgeted. And then as you can see, expenditures overall were 3.1 million to the good. And the net change in fund balances, if you notice, we budgeted a $12,800,000 shortfall, which would have left us with a $34 million fund balance. Well, in actuality, we all ended up having to take 4.6 million out, which meant we were 8 million to the good on what we had budgeted. So overall, we should have an ending fund balance in the neighborhood of $42.8 million, which is a lot better than 34.6, which helped with moving the money to the debt services month. So are there any questions on the financial statements or summary?
Things kind of work out, don't they?
They seem to follow the last couple of months each year, so we've been lucky with that. So any questions?
Thank you very much. Okay, and action items, architectural services contract approval with Mr. Tim Anderson. You're just here a lot lately, aren't you?
Lots of planning going on. We're now trying to move it from the planning table to the drawing table. Do we actually have anything too much to present on this? Yeah, my first question back for Rick is when we get to see the 2014 bond statement show up on the next financial report. So I can see how much money we have to work with. All right. The first architectural contract I'm presenting tonight was James W. Buckley and Associates. This is going to be for modifications and additions to South Forsyth and Riverwatch Middle Schools. This is where we're going to add the classroom additions to each of the sixth, seventh and eighth grade classrooms for a total of 24 classrooms, instructional units at each building. One of the caveats is with South Forsyth High School being the first generation of that design, we will have an addition to the media center and to the cafeteria as their core space to support the 1,400 FTE capacity we have proposed for those two buildings.
You meant middle school.
Middle, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We have a rule now, we don't name 2002 North anywhere.
That's right.
Good idea.
Anyway, for South Forsyth, no, we will have to expand the quarry for the new FTE capacity per state standards. We do have plans for expanding or replacing the band rooms within the facilities and expanding or constructing a makers mark, maker space laboratory space to support their CTA program. And this is one of the projects we did talk last week that we're going to combine the South Forsyth Middle and Riverwatch Middle Schools into a single bid project for contract lit. And we're estimating the architectural estimate for that project is about $11,148,000. And this will be for the architectural and civil engineering services for those two schools.
Can I ask a quick question before the recommendation? So Mr. McKnight, we're talking this afternoon, is this, would this be the same firm that would look at the possible changes to the carpool area that was part of the bond?
Yes, and we did identify that with the project program for South Forsyth Middle.
Okay, goodness. Thank you.
If I can request.
Okay, it is recommended the board approve the architectural services contract for James W. Buckley and Associates to design and produce the construction documents required for the Riverwatch Middle School Edition, Swanee, Georgia, and South Forsyth Middle School Edition, Coming, Georgia.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Kristen and a second by Nancy. Any further discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, okay?
The next architectural service contract we have is for Manley Spangler Smith Architects out of Griffin, Georgia. This will be for the additions and modifications to South Forsyth High School. As you've seen in the presentation they just made, this will basically include a new cafeteria, cafeteria kitchen and a new competition gym is the main focus. We have included the plans to include administration suite, connecting pedestrian corridors between the existing campuses and net gain of, I forgot what the net gain of the actual classrooms are. Eight new high school classrooms, two additional science labs, band chorus room and modification of the old west hall cafeteria for the hospitality academy and a modification for the engineering multi-use lab, which will give them two at that center. If I could ask for recommendations?
It is recommended the board approve the architectural services contract for Manley Spangler Smith Architects to design and produce the construction documents required for additions and modifications to South Forsyth High School, Coming, Georgia.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Ann and a second by Nancy. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Okay.
The third architectural services contract I'm bringing before you is with Foreman Sealy Fountain Architecture Incorporated. And the architectural services is for the additions and modifications to the North Forsyth High School. This project includes a new gymnasium, cafeteria kitchen, pedestrian connection corridors across the campus and include a net gain of 16 new classrooms, two science labs, a new three classroom ROTC center with rifle range. We plan to include the new administration suite. And we have modifications for the course, band, two health occupation lab, well, health occupation lab, sports medicine lab, and then an overall traffic pattern improvement for that campus. And this architectural estimate for construction is a total of $23,252,000. If I could ask for a recommendation to approve?
It is recommended the board approve the architectural services contract for Foreman Sealy Fountain to design and produce the construction documents required for additions and modifications to North Forsyth High School, Coming, Georgia.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
I really think you should make it, but I'll make it on my hand.
You really need to make that one.
I do, but I will let Tom.
I'll make the motion instead.
All in favor? I'll raise my hand higher.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, and the fourth architectural services contract with Clark Patterson Engineer Surveyor Architects and Ledscape, doing business is Clark Patterson Lee here in our area. The architectural services contract is for the Forsyth Central High School additions and modifications to include the new media center, cafeteria kitchen, pedestrian connection corridors between the campuses. The work may include the chorus room, drama lab, a new engineering multi-use lab and interior modifications with a special education intensive intervention suite, automotive lab, business labs, science labs and general high school classrooms. And the architectural estimate for construction for this project is a total of $13,757,000. And if I could ask?
It is recommended the board approve the architectural services contract for Clark Patterson Lee to design and produce the construction documents required for additions and modifications to Forsyth Central High School, Coming, Georgia.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Go in.
I'll move.
Second.
A motion by Ann and a second by Tom, all in favor? Any discussion? No, all in favor? Unanimous?
We wanted it yesterday.
Yeah, it said we want it yesterday. That's right. But Tim knows that, right?
I was getting my next part keyed up real quick.
We like these action items.
Okay. The next action item I'm going to present, we talked about last week at the work session because it is kind of a long convoluted process. But this is for the resolution to adopt a process for pre-qualifying our general contractors or construction managers at risk. And basically what this resolution would do is give the facilities office more directly, the director of facilities, direction which to solicit the qualification statements from general contractors to be able to provide future offers or construction management proposals for the seven projects we've listed for the next fiscal year.
It is recommended the board adopt this process, which will allow Forsyth County schools to receive pre-qualification statements from prospective offers contractors.
Hard to say.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
A motion by Nancy and a second by Kristen. Any more discussion, anything from last week and we're all good? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous?
Yeah, it gets real tricky when you try to remember the reasonably susceptible or the most advantageous in the right order. And then now that you've approved the process, we're going to ask you to approve a resolution, oops, approve a resolution for us to put out there for the general contractors and construction managers to submit their qualifications for the Brandywine Elementary School Project, the Middle School Number 10 Project, for Forsyth High School Additions and Modifications Project, Lambert High School Additions Modification and Project, which I'll be getting a contract from them on the next board agenda. The South Forsyth High School Additions and Modifications Project, Forsyth Central High School Additions and Modifications Project and the Riverwatch Middle School Additions and the South Forsyth Middle School Additions and Modifications Projects.
Okay, Tim, this wasn't on an action item. It's included in an action item, but you do want approval for the resolution denied.
Resolution to prove the resolution for these projects to go out for pre-qualification.
Okay, will that be agreeable to the board that we go ahead with that in that manner?
The details are both listed, one and two are both listed.
It's under details.
Right.
It is. Okay, the required documentation for the Forsyth County Board of Education to adopt this process are as follows, the resolution adopting a process for mandatory pre-qualification for prospective bidders and offers. We'll make that in the form, well, we've already, I'm sorry, we've made that. But we will skip to number two, which says resolution. This identifies the various capital construction projects that Forsyth County schools will be accepting, pre-qualification statements from offers, general contractors submitting proposals. So we would ask for approval for that resolution.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
A motion by Ann and a second by Kristen. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, okay? And we're finished with you. Nah, you'll be back.
Just a little bit next.
Okay, we will move on to points of information.
Okay, we have submitted those to you and I think you've had a chance to look over several of those items, such as the fundraisers, overnight field trips, the work orders. I did want to bring your attention to the grading systems and I think Ms. Harrison's going to come forward and talk to us about that. Did I catch you by surprise?
I will, she says.
We actually just wanted to update these. When we looked at them back in the spring, we realized it had been about five years since they actually had been updated. So we updated those, if you notice, at the elementary level. We didn't in the past have our change to a 1, 2, 3, 4 with our standard space reporting, which again, we've been doing for about five years. So that had not been updated and then there was, as far as the work habits and those kind of things, that had not been included, K-12, when we implemented that across the board. So those were the primary updates that we made with grading and reporting. And it's actually, that falls under a procedure, not a policy. So that's why it was changed on the agenda items, changed to just a point of interest rather than earlier on.
So nothing is really changing from what we've been doing. This is housekeeping.
Exactly, it's just housekeeping. There's no changes in what we've been doing. Thank you.
Okay, and the last item that we had on the agenda is zoning impact. And Tim, anything that you would like to speak to us about with those?
Basically, there are five zoning applications that were posted last Friday. So we did get those pulled together and they're on your board report. Out of the five, three of those were actually tied to one parcel zoning for about 200 lots at Georgia 400 and set down. But it took several different actions to pull those properties together. The one other thing following our meeting last week, I have drafted a letter to Tom Brown, the director of the Planning and Community Development, requesting that he be able to meet with us and talk about the possible timeframes through the zoning application process that we could update our enrollment numbers, review those before they go to. process that we could update our enrollment numbers, review those before they go to the final hearing. So I've done this draft letter to make sure I've met the intent of what y'all are looking for. If it's acceptable, I'll send it to Tom.
Thank you for setting that up, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay.
All that I have.
All righty. Now we will move to executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Tom and a second by Ann, all in favor? Unanimous.